items that we went into closed session for. One item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, discussion of personnel matter, and three items under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A8, consultation with legal counsel.
Senator.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliff?
Aye.
Mr. Fons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Now, everyone stands for the pledge allegiance to our Constitution, Ratcliff, and then the invitation afterwards for Counselor East, please.
My pledge is to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, with indivisible, with every and justice for all. If you'd like to join us in the invitation, please bow your head to the sun. Dear Lord, thank you for the strength and wisdom you give us daily. We ask for your continued guidance on all matters and ask that you would lift and bless our community always. In your name we pray, amen.
All right, just where you ready? Where you ready to be?
It's already locked.
I'm sorry, but thank you. All right. And is there any invitations for public sessions? I'd like to welcome all the guests and visitors that are here today, here and online. We're gonna go on forward to presentations of Jill and me with the newly promoted police officers, please.
Thank you, Senator.
Please. We're chief.
Want to introduce you to our newest group of promoted officers. I don't think we've done this before, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe you've conceded for a long time. So, something new we're wanting to do, rate it faster, quick when we get promoted. So, we're gonna start tonight in front of you as a match. Okay? John Saul, so first. Come on up. John Saul was formerly a sergeant at B Squad, he's been promoted to lieutenant or patrol official. Next is Anthony Thompson. He's the former corporal of B Squad, he's been promoted to sergeant of B Squad. Yes, she lets know that we need to move. But you're good.
Well, there's not a line on there, but maybe you come over to that. There you go.
Next up is Josh Day, he's the former corporal of B Squad, he's been promoted to sergeant of C Squad.
You put on that sign.
I agree. Next up is Bryant Cox, he's been promoted to corporal of B Squad. I wouldn't say where he came from, but we have literally had him on almost every shift, he's that versatile. So, we're glad to promote him. And unfortunately Detective Rick Riddle couldn't be with us tonight, he had a work-related injury. We wish him well, but he's been promoted to detective sergeant. That's all we have so far. Thank you.
And Jill, you wanna stand up there with him? She's the short one.
I am.
No, she's regular, the rest are too tall. I would just say that these gentlemen, along with Jill, did extra duty for us while we were in that interim chief situation, and many of them had to step up and take on additional assignments in an acting role and prove themselves to be very able in that process. So, we'd like for the council and the public to know when we do promotions in the future in the same way that we've asked our new recruits when they come out to be introduced to you so people will know their faces. And I think you will be seeing more and more of a community engagement kind of approach with these and the other officers that are with the department. So, congratulations to all of you and to the families.
I think Mr. Radcliff wanted to say something.
Oh, listen, please just hear it really shortly. I just want you guys to know that never doubt that this council is not standing behind you with our town manager or to move this park to the fore. It is the greatest, but I wanted to make the best South West Virginia sound. So, make no doubt about it, pass it on to your patrol people. You have a great chief, you have a great, I've worked with John for many years, I know he's top line, the two guys I haven't got to work with, but I see you all the time. Nobody appears not going to score for 100% quickly, whatever we gotta have to make it number one. Want you to know that.
We appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Thank you all so much. You're leaving.
And thank you for being here tonight.
Yes. Thank you for having us.
So, at that, we'll move on to our public hearing. We case 2021-06ZA, a proposal amending to section amendment to section 5.33, table 2, off-street parking space requirements for multifamily residential use. Do we have a staff for that?
I'm gonna serve as your staff reporter tonight because Brady Deal is en route to take his examinations tomorrow for certification in zoning administration and planning, and he's been studying all week, and I'm sure he's gonna ace those exams. But you will notice in the application that he's given a longer than normal overview. Basically, in his review of our zoning ordinance, we did not have a good handle on the number of parking spaces that should be allotted for multifamily residential units. The planning commission on at least two occasions discussed that, looked at various options, and their final decision or recommendation was to change the parking requirements to require one space for one-bedroom apartments, one and a half spaces for two-bedroom apartments, and two spaces per unit for three-bedroom apartments with an additional space requirement equal to 10% of the total unit count. And I think if you read further, you'll see that Brady actually did a review of existing multifamily housing projects in the town. Many of those were done some years ago, so their parking space requirements may not be the same. But I know in the case of the apartment complex where I live, they limit you to one car for their one and two-bedroom apartments and then one additional space for visitors. So, I think with the recommendation from the planning commission, we will have some updated requirements. And we do have a couple of multifamily projects that are in the works in the town, the two schools that I think you have heard about previously. And so, it's very timely that we look at changing these requirements. And we also have attached a chart that shows what those requirements are in some of the neighboring jurisdictions. So, the recommendation from the planning commission is to approve these parking space requirements for multifamily.
Counsel, have you questions?
Are we doing this because somebody asked?
Actually, I think it's, the process of review started when we recognized that we were gonna have a couple of multifamily units coming in. I'm not at all confident that at least one of those projects necessarily agrees with the space requirements, but obviously, once you all adopt them, if you do, those will be the requirements that will be used. But a lot of developers would like to minimize the number of parking spaces because it's imperious surface, you know, it has some expense to not only grading but then caving and that kind of thing. So, this is kind of a compromised position. It's requiring more than was currently requiring, but less than probably what developers were preferring.
Well, we sort of mentioned it before, enjoying the old Claremont School.
Uh huh.
Or did you ask if it advanced that part of the party that no public knew or knew?
Well, in the case of Claremont School, because there was a road, it was really a road for the school and not for the public, but because the school had been closed for so long, it had become almost a standard way for people to go in and out. The idea of continuing access for that road was one of the concerns that that developer had because he would have had to meet the old requirements or the current requirements. He would have had to put parking spaces on the other side of the road, which means there would be pedestrian using access, you know, through that roadway. He did ask in his process for lessening of the spaces to this recommendation. So, it is not getting to what he wanted. On the other hand, he has since made some changes to his design so that he's going to be leaving that grid in place. And by the way, the Claremont School just got historic designation in the last week or so, which is something that that developer's been waiting on so that he can have access to historic tax credits. So, we expect to see that project moving forward relatively quickly. And once we have a good layout and plan, I'll be happy to have Brady bring that for presentation to you all so you can understand exactly what the details are.
Charlie, one quick question. Am I right to say that Virginia has relatively, when you put imperious surfaces down, Virginia has relatively high requirements when it comes to like stormwater runoff and stuff?
Yes, absolutely.
So, one of the issues that most developers have is that the more parking area you have, the bigger that sort of runoff and so it's even more area that is going sort of undervalued as far as tax assessments.
You're absolutely right.
So, you know, a big, like I think I was looking at the Beaumont parking lot, it's a 22 acre lot, and I think 18 or 19 acres of it is parking lot or drainage. And so, it's a lot of tax revenue that goes underused, but it's not valued anywhere close to what a building would be. So, lowering the parking density means that we get more buildings and theoretically more taxable revenue for the town.
And in a lot of cases, particularly commercial properties, they're built, the number of spaces go beyond the expectations of your requirements, and they're built for Thanksgiving, the Christmas.
Right.
As opposed to the rest of the year. But that's a decision and choice by the developers themselves. But when it comes to multifamily, you're absolutely right. And Virginia, over the last, I'd say dozen years, has gotten really strict on the stormwater management.
I guess I'd say the only drawback here is in reducing to one and a half spaces as opposed to where we're two and a half, which seems to be out of line with other areas. But even if one and a half would be probably on the, in most areas where it's two, not one and a half.
But then they wanted to add that provision about having additional spaces that really, I would say, were for guests, you know, for that accommodation.
So, 10% of the total.
Yes.
The only possible drawback would be a development that ended up not having enough spaces to handle the residents of that area, which I guess we don't have any concerns if that would be likely with this policy.
Well, it's really, in looking at the design guidelines, as Mr. Reese said, they'd have to make an adjustment perhaps on how many units, or they might decide to make more one-bedroom units as opposed to two-bedroom units because of the space difference.
They can make, they can make more though, for him if they want it.
Oh, yeah, you can go beyond. You're just on minimum standards.
Can send about more.
Okay, any other questions? If not.
So, do we have to have a phone here?
Yeah, I forgot. I'll open the public hearing part of this. If there's no one here to speak, then I'll close the public hearing. Now, if one of you'd like to make a motion.
Well, do we have a, do we just move to amend based on, do we need a resolution? Or are we?
Given my newness to being whatever my role is sitting here, I don't know what to call it. This was actually prepared by Brady, and it does not have an accompanying resolution. So, if you all want to delay this from the cameras, you want to vote, and then we'll have a resolution drafted.
We can make, we can make a construct staff to bring our, bring our ordinance in.
And you just tell us if you want to, if it be an affirmative vote, we can, you know. So, because from a couple of your cases recently, we've provided you with two options, you know, an approve or, you know, a deny rather than making the assumption that you're going to automatically do whatever the planning mission recommends.
So, we move to amend, move to instruct town employees, of town staff, to amend the zoning ordinance as directed by the, um, planning council?
Recommended.
As recommended by the planning council.
Check it up.
Will you, will you with a motion? No, you started it, okay.
Yes, and then second is.
Brooks.
Brooks is the second. And then may I have a roll call for that, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliff?
Aye.
Mr. Fons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right, now we'll move on to the public comment period. Don't think I have anything, if they have anyone.
I wasn't sure of the process, but if you have time for me?
Do you feel bad for it?
No, I didn't, I came in with a sort, I have no idea how it worked, I'm so sorry.
Can you go ahead?
Fine.
Okay.
I think along, and I actually was in Dublin, but I wanted to make you guys aware of something that's important for the town. Sabrina Radcliff and I are co-founders of the last becoming Free Store. I don't know if you've seen any of our information lately, but the Free Store is exactly what it sounds like. Everything in the store is free to anyone. We do the work we do based off community donations. We started, August 1st, we opened in a storage building and have been serving time and time residents out of the storage building for the past couple of months. And we just, this past Sunday on October 3rd, opened in our new building at 260 West Main Street in Dublin. And we wanted to make sure that you guys were aware so that you could get the information out if there's anybody in time that might need it, and invite you guys to come out and see us. Right now, we're open the first and third Sunday of every month from 12 to 3. We have plans to expand the days and hours, but we're getting settled. Figuring out what we can do, getting volunteers, training, that kind of thing. And our mission is kind of twofold. It's important to us that the citizens of the town of Philaski and the county of Philaski as a whole are able to live lives with dignity with their basic needs met. And we think that there's enough in this community to go around. So, we are kind of the hub to get things from people who no longer need them to people who do need them. And the other half of our mission is to keep things out of the landfill. We're all guilty of throwing away way too much stuff, things that are still perfectly good. It sits in the bag, we don't take it to Goodwill, then on trash day, we just chuck it, right? And we heard from a lot of people in our county that they don't like to donate to some of those bigger chain thrift stores because the CEO at the top is making millions of dollars while the people shopping are people like me who don't have that money to kind of play around with. So, we make sure that things get where they're going for free to people who need them or want them. There's no need testing, anybody can walk in anytime or with them and get what we have available. And I hope a few flies, I don't think I have enough because I ran out of, uh, French turkey.
I'm so, I'm actually, so I know where it's at, would you tell them where that is?
Yeah, so 260 West Main Street, it is Mark Hicks' old office there in Dublin, behind Walgreens, we're in the same little group there with French Residential and Basil Pizza Hut. So, whole parking lot action, where before, we were, like I said, we were in the storage unit, and it's a little cramped. So, it's kind of nice to have this big space now where we can accommodate more members of the community at the same time. Do you guys have any questions at all? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda. If you all would look at your September 21st, 2021 council work session minutes and after you've looked out from you approved and one of your make a motion for acceptance.
May I make a motion to approve the September 21st, 2021 council work session minutes?
And may I have a roll call for that, please, ma'am?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliff?
Aye.
Mr. Fons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Move to resolution 2021-47, approving the purchase of practice.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as the council is aware, there was a pack sale in the county several weeks ago, and the town put in a successful bid on the three properties that are listed. Actually, two of them have multiple tax numbers because they, it's a fairly large parcel in each case. As previously mentioned, these properties are being purchased with program income from the community development block land, so it's not town general funds. And what we are doing is purchasing properties in the south side of the town with the hope of using these properties to develop new housing, particularly for first-time homebuyers if we are using the ARS funds that Brady Deal mentioned to you all last time. But we also have been in contact with a couple of developers who are also interested in perhaps doing development. So, I'd like for the council to approve these purchases. And also, in the resolution, you'll see there's a request that would authorize the finance department to write off any delinquent taxes on these properties since, in fact, we will be paying ourselves for these properties.
One quick question, are these gonna be put in the name of the redevelopment housing story? Or do you have a, just doing a, not, not in that part yet?
The only thing that's been done up to this point is in the purchase agreement that was signed with the treasurer on the day of the sale. It was put in the name of the town. I have to check if the ARS program allows these properties to be in the name of another public entity with this certain.
It doesn't, it doesn't, I was just curious if that was gonna be the plan. But it just, that was a.
Generally, the funding from the state has to come to the local government. But I honestly don't know about the arrangement for now. But I think, as you all know, it ends up being in name only because your staff in the camera department are actually helping to get it.
Are there any other questions? I'll move to the document, the 2021-47, I'm ready. Say it.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, ma'am?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliff?
Aye.
Mr. Fons?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Move to resolution 2021-48, amendment of pay and classification plan.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, as indicated in the resolution seeking to amend the pay classification plan, when we submitted that to you several weeks ago, there were a couple of positions that were left off the list inadvertently. And so, we want to make sure that those are added appropriately linked to the pay plan so that we can move forward with, in the case of one, the filling of a new physician, the grant manager position. And the other one inadvertently was the public information officer position. And that's because it wasn't in the old plan, and we picked up the plan inadvertently and spoke about it. So, no changes otherwise in terms of salaries or grades or anything else.
Just may I make a motion to approve resolution 2021-48, as Rick?
Yes. And may I have a roll call for that, please, ma'am?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliff?
Aye.
Mr. Fons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
So, do the council comments, Mr. Penn, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'm ready to make a few.
Mr. Dawson?
I'm excited.
Mr. East?
Just one comment regarding the, as Christmas approaches and the lighting of Jackson Park, I came across a picture of the first year that we lit the, we lit the park, and it was pretty impressive. I just wanted to, and I know staffing is busy, but hopefully we'll be able to go in and kind of spruce everything up a little bit, make sure the light's running properly, lit properly, so when we turn them on this year, that will be the best we can be.
Now, we did turn those on perhaps as much as a month ago in honor of our soldiers that lost their lives in Afghanistan. And there were a few of them, I know they identified then, but we certainly plan to do that. Only question is how soon, you know, you want them to be lit. I think last time we did it around the 1st of December in anticipation of the parade, that I believe was like the 2nd or 3rd of December, we can certainly do that again this year. We are finally making some headway on some different positions and maybe look at better positions staffing-wise to get thanks to our local area.
I think, well, normally we do it on the night of the parade. I guess, we didn't have a parade last year.
Yes, we did, we had that drive-through, and actually, they did come on the first street, but we lit it, I think even a day or two before that, at the request of a member of council. We go ahead and do that, and we certainly provide it.
Thank you. That's all.
Mr. Radcliff? Do you happen to have any?
One question on the wire, just to counseling. Is there any way we can give the pedal for the fire parade on, the visiting, for a fire parade on the city? You good?
I don't think so, the council.
Are they ready?
It's this Thursday. It's a little just a little bit, but we certainly try.
What about the water fountain? Is there a water fountain down, it's not working?
It's down for the season now.
We'll work out that in spring.
Fast.
Real quick, we'll set up on the workshop, for workshop, ladies and ladies up front, I want to bring this up in discussion on a workshop to dedicate a few parks right here.
Well, I want to talk to you all when I get to my comments about my having put that out and what I think are the next steps. So, if you don't mind holding off until then and we can.
I have a couple of names that I want to discuss in a workshop. Both of the names were very well invited to this town, have dedicated their lives to this town. I would like to discuss these two names to dedicate these parks to these two individuals in discussion with this council. I think both names have been very well accepted. Uh I'll keep it till the workshop, but I will put on there for discussion, go ahead, let's, let's just look at the name of these two parks, dedicate the two parks there.
I gotta get a belt first.
What am I getting? Don't mess with me, like I said, it's like grass.
Yeah, you can find a way to slip it in one way or another.
Mr. Reese?
Uh I hate to bring this up because I know it's like a never ending sub topic, but um I've gotten some comments about the vulture slash buzzards in downtown, um they greet me in the morning uh at my office. And um I know other people over, especially around the old jail and across the street from there. And I know that, you know, they're protected species and all that stuff and it just, I wanna say that I've, I've, you know, brought it up to your attention. I know we usually have like a mitigation agreement with somebody, I think that was the deal last time I discussed this with somebody. You with the, or somebody like that, it was the, you know, move them around, which just moves them from one, you know, up from the cemetery to another downtown. And I mean, there's, there's not really a solution to it.
Not a good one.
Um and uh but.
You are seeing them.
I, I'm seeing many of them, there were many of them this morning, um which, you know, I'm here, so it wasn't that bad. Um but uh but I just wanted to say that I, you know, if, if there's a, if, if there needs to be a tick on the box about, you know, the next spot, that's what I would like, that would be great. I have not, but somebody has, let me, somebody's got a cat food and they, they were eating at it. So I mean, and I don't know if that's an issue too, is that if we're having, I mean, I see a lot of, what I assume are stray cats or, you know, outdoor cats at the very least, so I don't know, but it's a big problem later.
Well, we do have people um feeding animals, not just uh vultures or cats, but deer um and uh other animals. And that doesn't help us, you know, with uh the problem, you know, but. I will mention to, I think it's my department that has the, the gun uh that kind of goes off boom and has them, the vultures moved to another area. And then I know who will call me because I know where they will go, no one will have. It's a business.
I, I, I know that there's no, like I said, there's no good solution to it, I understand that, but.
Does anybody wanna say how beautiful our roads look now that many of them have been paved and we have the yellow stripings? And, and they went through and with the striping throughout the town. I mean, I think uh our roadways are vastly improved.
I think too, I think it looked really good if it gets weighty, dull.
And you said earlier that you weren't gonna say anything.
He said he wasn't gonna talk about the grass, he didn't say anything about weeds.
Well, that's what most of it is.
So I have just a couple of little things too. Um one is um we had discussed, and I know this is yours, mowing contractors to do all of the town. I had someone asking me about that, if we were, are we taking out like a bid for like a contractor to do the whole mowing for the town? So that we don't have to put staff out? I was just asking, I said I'd find out.
We have a contract with an individual who does the mowing of properties that are under code enforcement after having given proper notification and giving the owner the opportunity to correct the problem and then replace weeds on the property. We put out a request for proposals for other interested parties about four or five months ago. And we got only one response, and that was from the gentleman that was currently doing the work. In the last few days, we have gotten another gentleman who had come forward interested in doing that. Now, that's a different approach or a different part of the mowing operation than putting out for a contract the mowing of all of the town owned properties, which our people um spend quite a bit of time during particularly the, the summer months, as well as at the cemetery, um doing the grass cutting. We have not, to my knowledge, investigated the idea of putting those under contract. I did do that several years ago in another community. And for a couple of years, we got good response and then I think the cost, um and particularly the, the demands uh that we placed on the contractors uh in terms of frequency of mowing and that kind of thing. Um and thus the rapids in our workforce. But were you referring to kind of the individual mowing? Well, we have had someone come forward and.
Well, that's what I mean for all of our stuff, it's the same gentleman that talked to you about the other. He was wondering about mowing everything for the town, if they would do that, and I told him I would ask.
It's not something that, to my knowledge, the town has done in many years, but I can certainly talk with the staff in both works and see if we could put out a proposal and see what kind of a price we got and what kind of.
He's some of the work on that.
Hopefully, we're getting out of the grass cutting season in the next few weeks.
Well, then, you know, the mayor brings up a good point and kind of, kind of. To what, to what the mayor's saying, it, it, it would be interesting to know because now is the time. Uh the mowing contractors, uh the way I understand they work, you know, they, they like to have slots that they slot people into so that once they're full, then they don't take on any new business. So the time for getting estimates would be before the next growing season. So uh but, but with that said, I, I think it would be interesting to understand what uh identi, you know, identifying areas that, that we absolutely uh need to have looking our best at all times. Our entrances to town, uh whether it be ninety nine, Rattle Lotto. Uh the reason being is, you know, that's your first impression as you're out into town. And when you have weeds, and I know Jamie's brought this up numerous times, if you have weeds growing up around sign posts, it just looks bad. You can mow everything around it and, and still it looks bad. So if we could identify the areas and, and find that balance, uh not necessarily, and, and maybe, maybe we could, you know, uh contract everything out, or, or we could do something, the, the most important areas, uh the most visible areas, contract those out and then use our staff to maintain the rest, whatever, whatever we think of it. But I, I, I do think what the mayor's saying has a lot of merit.
All right, I'll certainly discuss it with staff and we'll prepare a request for proposals and see what we can.
Another one that I've had is the signs that are on our light posts in Jackson Park. They had, she'll ask you, they're now just blue, can we either take them down and get new ones? You know what I'm talking, the ones right, right along here that they've all faded, everyone else of it's faded out. The ones that became sales on the light posts and they're the light posts all in. But the.
What's one of the signs for?
They were just, they said they were so big and it says, July town.
They've got like a town seal on it.
Yeah, and they're all.
Are they flags or they're actually signs?
They're the little blue.
The favorite sign that they have.
Yeah, favorite, okay, that's, that's what I was trying to get at, because when I hear the word sign, I think of something metallic, but it's not.
But yeah, and it's, they've all faded, I mean, they're just like, look. Um you can faintly see, other thing was, when we like at Christmas, or I feel like, couldn't we do it all the time, the gazebo? It is, how much would it be to put like LED bulbs in there so that it's lit at night? Because I feel like that's a spot that is in the middle of town too, that people should see and they feel like they could actually walk up there if they wanted to at night and set and it not be pitch dark. Just one there.
All right, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to your report.
Um a couple of things that I wanna mention, first of all, as we sit here um tonight in the council meeting, students from a Virginia Tech Community Service Class, uh along with uh an organization called Virginia Tech Engage, have been uh active on the Door Highway side uh of the creek, uh trying to remove what has been identified as the invasive plants, uh not the plants that are needed to make sure that Pete Creek stays in a healthy state, but those plants that shouldn't be there. Um and in fact, uh the gentleman who's our horticulturist is going to be on a regular basis now uh meeting with one of the volunteers from Friends of Pete Creek to eventually clear all of that out because in a couple of hours this evening, you know, they certainly aren't able to accomplish that in total. But this is in response to um some concerns that you all as a council have mentioned about the appearance. Um and in fact, Bill Caggo went there this evening as well, uh so we will be picking up uh those cuttings tomorrow. And hopefully, the next time we drive down Door Highway, you'll see an improvement. It won't be finished, uh but it is a project that we have agreed to participate in along with the volunteers. And I have a very elaborate and uh technically uh prepared um comment from Kathy Hanks uh about their need to make sure that certain plants are left there, but certainly they agree that um those areas have grown up and have a lot of, again, what they call invasive plants that are not healthy to the plants that should be there, as well as are creating some of the issues that you've heard from the neighbors, you know, about not being able to see uh through that area. Bill Caggo and I met with the Friends of Pete Creek last week, um and we're talking about maybe even creating a small fencing area there that might hold back some of that growth uh in the future. So I want you just be aware of the fact that we are working with them and that you should see a marked difference if not just tomorrow, but in the succeeding weeks, uh because there is a gentleman, is a volunteer with the Friends of Pete Creek, Bill Ovengane, I'm sure you all know him, and he has agreed to on a regular basis meet out there with our staff person and clear those areas. So we're very pleased that that is happening. Um secondly, I wanted to briefly um remind you all of the original concept design, which you have in front of you. Um the um what they call a recreational park complex, it was done by Draper Egan several years ago. Uh they had the idea of a skate park uh being placed on this site and also um a basketball court. And I think we've mentioned that even as we've talked about a basketball court and changing interest, some people suggested that might be a pickleball court. And there's even a way, if I understand it, to mark that court for both uses, so that you could have pickleball when people are interested in that sport, you could have basketball. You'll see that there, the um total plan calls for some future activities to include um a restroom, bike uh racks, um and a donor closet. You also hopefully remember that um that's a lighting and, and potentially fencing. We made the skate park one of our ARPA items and invested in a consultant to look at uh this space and to design a skate park for us. Uh they have come back with a proposal, um and actually at looking at the site, uh they looked at both pads. And hopefully, you've had a chance to drive by and see the really fantastic work that was done in completing and on time and within budget. Um the restoration or remediation project that we had to pay all money for. It was tight, it was close, um we had to use our own forces to do some work at the last minute, but I think it turned out very, very well. Uh but in the plan that you see before you, there's only one area that is shown um for the skate park. And uh the individual who is working with this has estimated that to put the proper kind of ramps and stuff on that particular section would cost about two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. He's also suggested that if the council wanted to consider it, you could put additional uh ramps on what, on this drawing is shown at the basketball court and that those improvements would be about a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. So if you were to have the entire parcel devoted to stating, uh we're talking, you know, about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh before we venture any further um in looking at this project and even inviting the community, you know, to take a look at it, particularly the skateboard enthusiasts, uh I think it's important for the council uh to decide if you want to have multiple uses uh of the property as was originally envisioned. I would also mention that we have stubbed out um in the center um the necessary um lines to eventually put restaurants there, but obviously, we have not accommodated that expense at this particular time. But we did that before the concrete was poured so that we wouldn't have to tear up concrete in the future.
Mr. President, let me bring something up, uh I know the basketball court is gonna be a huge, it's gonna be a huge drop. Uh it probably will be occupied, you talked about a pickleball. It, it look, uh consider putting that there, because most people who play to play pickleball are gonna be a little bit older than the ones who play the basketball. I've been asked by citizens, I think, uh mostly that live up in Bayers area, just shit was being won, to take the sixteen or the six street park, the bas, or the tennis court that is there, and it would take a lot of repair though. I mean, the fence is broke down and cut the grass and all, and prop the fence up, and you actually go in and read it and just paint it. You have a, a private pickleball court right there. And stay off this because I'm telling you, uh basketball's gonna be huge there. They play all day and half the night and it's, and so I don't know how you would, why, who's gonna get it at what time? If you confuse it like that, when we have a great uh painted six street already to go. It's just matter, it has to be designed for the pickleball, I don't know what that is, I don't think I've ever seen anybody play it. Uh you, you, instead of confusing this, you go there.
Don't you play pickleball?
No, no. Okay. There's a skateboard man, he.
Oh, he's a skateboarder. Well, the real question before you all tonight, so that we can keep moving this process, is to decide if you want to have what I call multi-use of the area. So that would include keeping this pad that shows on this drawing for basketball, um and or anything else that would be out of that kind of pad and leave the skateboard activity to this one side. Because as I said, we'd like to share um in a public forum uh with a consultant leading the discussion, uh his thoughts about the design of what to put on this area. And then my goal would be um to then try to identify through our ARPA funding uh what we could do this year and or next year to actually accomplish um putting those ramps on it, as well as looking particularly at lighting, uh which I think is gonna be needed, um and perhaps even some fencing.
So I, I may be kind of straying here, but on the right side of the proposed path, everybody sit here, is that, is, is, has that ground been remediated or, I don't recall, I, I think it has, but.
Um which typically why?
I, I, I think it's just the same, I don't, I don't know that that pad has been remediated. Because I, I think what was remediated was, was where, where the, where the, where the current pads are, the new pads are, that was where the old building site was, so I think that's what needed to be redone. I think this path is still, it's just a path, it's not.
On the right side of the path, there's some, so my, like, the reason I'm asking that question is um it's the basketball court, we're on the right side of the path and then the entire pad that you're showing here.
It's all poured.
Boom is poured.
Yeah, that concrete's already been poured.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that, I mean, what you see is, I don't think the, the pavilion part, that center.
None of the center part has been done, but the two pads have been poured.
The two pads, they're, they're, they're in there.
In fact, uh we had to put up no trespassing passing signs even before uh the concrete had cured because people wanted to skate. So it is marked with no trespassing. And uh my plan, subject to the council's approval, is to continue to leave what is left of a skate park on McGill uh operational until we're able to make these improvements here, uh because otherwise, I think we'll have people violating that, that they're trespassing.
So are you proposing that the, you, you set a mixed use? You mean skateboarding for the bask, which currently the basketball pad as well as basketball? as well as basketball, or, or just convert it all to skateboard?
Well, I have a digital recommendation. You can ask me for one if you want. But what we poured and what we did for the remediation, we went beyond what we expected to be able to do with what we call the BEVAC money. We got $240,000 to do the remediation, which involved primarily removing the contaminated soils and putting appropriate cover. Because we worked at that long and hard and went through almost a year of negotiation, we were able to eke out of that money enough to contract with a vendor to put the concrete pads down. So both of them have been done. And we've also, as I said, with town forces, stubbed out for the eventual restroom facility. This project was in your capital budget, shown in next year's budget, not the current one we're in, for a million dollars, because that was the price that Draper Egan put on it several years ago. We know that will be less because of the work that has been done. So the real question now is, how much of this site do you want used for skate park? And how much of it do you want to use for other purposes?
I think the fact, my, so where I was at, and I don't think change is based on what the court... So I was wondering if, if you made these pads sole purpose skateboard and then moved the basketball court over to the right side of the path, is that...
That property, not our council.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know what that property was.
If somebody bought that, step on the other side of that.
Actually, the midpoint people bought.
Did they buy that?
Yeah. Now, there is this walkway, as you can see, and we are, at my request, improving that. The Friends of Peak Creek have been working on renovating, and they still have a lot of work to do, the pedestrian bridge. And the mayor did purchase for the town lights that we have now erected on that pedestrian bridge. It was lit as of last night. So we're hoping, and we're going to be improving the walkway on the opposite side of the bridge as well, so that we're hoping that people will start using that path and walkway to get back and forth from one area of the town to the other. But I have, you know, as I said, I have a $211,000 estimate for just the pad, that already is identified as skate park. And then another $157,000, if we were to do all of it, as a skate park. Clearly, the area that is on here is defined as the skate park in the way we have poured concrete. It's a much better arrangement than what the skaters currently have at McGill.
The 6200 square feet is larger than what they are currently using.
But I can tell you right now, if, if we take forward, without the council's consideration, all of the area being used for skating, that's what the skaters will want. On the other hand, this is, you all are in the driver's seat when it comes to making those kind of decisions. So while we want to keep this moving, because if I can keep it on schedule next spring, we might be able to actually have ramps on the site. And as I said, I do think that's a better time than us trying to do something between now and springtime because of how early it gets dark, you know, and other kinds of things, as well as cold weather.
So I'm seeing your recommendations to keep it like it is now?
Yes, sir.
I think, in my opinion, and partly what Mr. Rattler talked about, Sixth Street Park is their, the only basketball court, you know, currently in the town. It's the one that was, was not good when I was here. And, and, yeah, and so, and so, you know, that's a sorely needed, you know, thing, you know. And so, I, I don't think that making the decision to make this mixed use currently prevents you from one day saying, hey, we need to expand the skate park because of its use, and, you know, or in the same, hey...
We built another, we built another set of...
Or nobody's using the basketball court, so let's change that. And, and, you know, you know, there's going to be an expense to make another basketball court too, so it's not going to be, I mean, it's going to be an added expense either way, beyond what the $200,000 was. And I don't think going makes you prevent you from, you know, later saying, okay, this is, you know, we need to go bigger, you know, or, or saying that nobody's getting the basketball court. But with, with the sole basketball court we have, the town being in the condition that it is, it means that it tends to just hard this project out next year.
So that just helps me, when we move forward with the public input, to say, you know, this is the area, and here's what the consultant has said, what should be the layout, you know, and the kind of types and the equipment, you know, that's put on the site to get, you know, some feedback from them before we move forward with any purchase or making arrangements, so.
If they, and if that's the reality going on, I agree with Mr. Rattler that I, I think keeping the, the pickleball and the basketball separate seems to make the most sense, you know, setting aside, having the funding to do the Sixth Street.
Yeah, I mean, that's going to be more than a little bit, because that surface sadly needs to be resurfaced, and that, you know. Although, if we're going to dedicate it to pickleball, I think we might be able to do it a little bit more cheaply, a tennis court.
You have the option of tennis and pickleball, which I think they probably would be more compatible.
And if you all have an interest in the Sixth Street property being evaluated for pickleball, we can certainly take a look at what that expense would be and look at it in our next council.
Can we do that, because I guess, just what if the council converts that, being used as tennis, and before just...
Certainly, it's been, you know, heavily upon the Sixth Street Park, these to be revitalized anyways. There's, there's a whole lot of aspects of that part that have been interacted with for way too long.
Well, you all have in your capital budget playgrounds every other year for the next half a dozen years. And my goal is to try to get several of those done, again, with the ARPA money, not in this year's preparation, but maybe next year. So we're looking at those, because I do see in those regulations that outdoor amenities, you know, are really strongly encouraged, not just from a tourism generation idea, because I think if you have a, a great skate park right here, you're going to have people coming to the town to skate who don't live here. Yeah, so it's going to bring in some interest now from the outside, as well as just people being outdoors, particularly because of health-related issues, so. I think I hear the council saying you want to kind of go forward with this same plan layout, so we'd be talking about skate park in the area, this drawing that you have to the right, and then we'll work on whether or not we could do something with the Sixth Street lot for pickleball, but see this as a basketball court at this point.
So this is more of a curious question. What are, what are your, what are your thoughts on donor plazas?
What are my thoughts on...
Donor plazas, there's a, on this...
I saw that. Oh, okay, well... They're usually fundraisers.
Right, I understand that.
I know that the museum, the Radcliffe Museum, has not had a lot of success recently. You know, they have their little donor area in that parking lot, some of which I think they attribute to COVID and the fact that...
Let, let me ask it a different way. In your, in your experience, have they, have they proved to be beneficial based on, from a fundraising standpoint, and then of course, the, you know, you have the, you have the maintenance and such associated with the appearances or...
It really depends on the location and the purpose for which they're being raised. I know when, when I was in the city of Brownup, they put stars out in front of the theater, it was a nonprofit, and it was a terrific fundraiser. And everybody took their kids, in my case, my grandkids, to show up where their names were, you know, on the stars. And my brother's community, they have one with veterans' names. And that seems to be very, very popular, and they're constantly adding. So really, it's kind of what is the, the impetus for it, you know. In, in one case, it was to fundraise for a theater, another it was just to honor, shouldn't say just, but it was to honor veterans. So I don't know what we would necessarily say would be the reason to donate to, to this plaza. Although, I do understand, in fact, it came up the last time we had a discussion on the skate park, that there was some interest, a little bit of fundraising that had been done by a group that was interested in improving, you know, the skate park.
You know, I think you kind of maybe touched on something. So as far as the veterans, for instance, with this park, is that, is that something that might be generating more interest in the, in the donor plaza, if, if it was maybe dedicated to veterans?
I think absolutely it would. You know, with that kind of emphasis, or in some communities that I know of, they've done either plazas or walls and had people's names. And in one case, it was an industrial museum, and they had people donating the names of people who'd worked in certain industries. And because we've had, you know, heavy industries over time in this community, you know, maybe you could connect something up, you know, so that people, if their family had ever worked in the furniture business here or had worked in the railroad, if you, if you had a theme, as opposed to just a vanilla kind of plaza, I think it has to have a basis of attracting somebody, wanting something to be recognized or someone to be working with.
So I think that's important. I, I, the reason I asked you that question is I've had some, I've not seen, in the donor plazas, I've, I've seen they've not always been well-supported, if it doesn't seem, but you, you, I think you got to the, what I was really unsure of, what I was trying to get at, but I think you got there. I, I think it needs that special cause, whatever, whatever it, it's, the decision is that that special cause is.
Well, and maybe when we have the discussion of the naming, we'll get some ideas too. But I'm sure we can find something to go in that space if it's not a...
Yeah, and I like your idea about the industrial. I mean, it seems like, I bet there's a lot of, you know, people work in industrial and, or any number of things, but something to, to bring some excitement and investment from the community, I think that's, other than just having your name on it.
Yeah, now that I think about it, and things that come off the top of my head aren't necessarily a dirty idea. But maybe there's something that we all think about that has to do with this whole pandemic that we've been through in honor, people who have really given of themselves in the medical professions and public safety, and, you know, people who've lost loved ones. I mean, you could wrap yourself around a theme, and I think you could get a lot of support. But it's really what resonates in this community. And, you know, I haven't been here long enough to really understand all the dynamics of some of the previous manufacturing.
I, I think that would be a necessary and important discussion.
Well, why don't we plan to do that at a future need, and you all can do some thinking about it in the meantime. The other thing I want to just remind you all and the public that we have the Fire Parade this Thursday at seven o'clock. And I understand it takes over an hour, and that people actually tailgate getting ready. It's that exciting, so I'm already driving up and down trying to figure out where I'm going to put my chair out and where I'm going to park my car that somebody doesn't have it towed, you know, because you're in somebody's parking. But it evidently is a very exciting event. Someone mentioned to me that there was a date shown in a chamber publication for the Christmas parade. That really hasn't been run by the town yet. It is something that another organization really prepares, but we will be having a meeting with them shortly to get those details. And I also want to mention that last night at the county courthouse, there was a lighting, pink lighting of the courthouse in honor of breast cancer awareness a month, and a cancer survivor who used to work for the county was the one that actually threw the switch. But according to the mayor, the county stole the idea from him because on the first of October, his home was lit in honor of those survivors, as well as his mother. But I think we're going to have a lot of people coming to the downtown to, to see how attractive the courthouse is lit in pink, although it turns purple when you take a picture of it. I don't know why. And I would just continue to say that we are having lots of interest in the town. It's very exciting. I participated in three interviews in the last week of potential employees of the town, and two of person, each of them indicated having had some knowledge or experience or even having lived in the town, and that they were seeing and are encouraged by the changes that are happening, not just with what the town or town employees are doing, but what citizens are doing and what interest there is in, in the community. And I think you will be hearing shortly some very significant announcements. We have some losses and we have some wins, but we're, I kept moving in our direction. So thank you again for your support, and I think you all know that several of us are subbing right now. That's why I didn't have your resolution in mind for tonight. And Rockell agreed to come back and take minutes, and I think she did a very good job with the minutes that you approved. And tonight, Jessica is running the Facebook for us, so you may see different faces over the next several weeks, but I think the fact that your employees are willing to pitch in and help in these kinds of circumstances should be very encouraging to you.
I didn't know that the meeting minutes were, were brief. That's good.
Well, they're going to be brief, really. I've gone back and looked at some of the old ones, and I think I can streamline a little bit more.
I didn't have Pioneer as much, so that's good.
Well, Rockell might come back during that. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so just as a reminder, our future council meetings, our next one is October 19th, that'll be a council work session start, closed session starts at 5:30, public session at 7:00 P.M.
And I'm going to just remind you all that's going to be a joint public hearing at your Portside Works business, two special exceptions, reservations.
With that, nothing more to do, I'm clear, adjourned.